This is the Thursday, March 13th, 2014. Fourteen meeting of the zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals. Could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Vig.
Here.
Mr. Carrs.
Here.
Mr. Ron.
Here.
Ms. Iker.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Ms. Dole.
Here.
Ms. McKay.
Here.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda are minutes. We have no minutes before us for approval. Next item is the Item C, Special Order of Business disclosures. Are there any disclosures to announce this evening? Mr. Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to disclose that I was absent at the February public hearing and will be abstaining from voting on Consent Agenda Items B and C. Those are Cases 2014-001, excuse me, Resolution 2014-001, and Resolution 2014-002. I was also absent at the public hearing on which Resolution 2014-003 was heard. However, I did listen to the public hearing on Granicus and will be voting for that resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. Ms. Iker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was similarly absent from the hearing in which Resolution 2013-012, Resolution 2014-001, and 2014-003 were heard, so I would be abstaining from those. However, I did listen to Resolution 2014-002 and will be voting to approve those minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Iker. Are there any other disclosures? I would like to disclose that I was also absent from the February meeting, so we'll be abstaining from hearing Resolutions 2014-002 and 2014-003. However, I did listen to the case for Resolution 2014-001, and so we'll be voting for, on the Resolutions Agenda Items A and B. I was at the hearing for 2013-012. Are there any other disclosures? If not, I believe that moves us to our next item, which is the Annual Election of Officers. And I can tell by the way my email blew up over the past two weeks. Everyone's really lobbying hard for their positions, but maybe we can talk about acceptance or their speeches. Well, if you want to make your acceptance speech, I guess we could. We have every March the election of officers, and it's also timely with the resignation of Ms. Wadd from last month's meeting. But we need to elect a chair, vice-chair, and parliamentarian. Is there anyone willing to, willing or interested in stepping forward? Mr. Vig.
Mr. Chairman, I was wondering if this is an item of business we could take up after the public hearings are concluded for the evening in the interest of our people here to testify. We could take that up later.
Thank you, Mr. Vig, and we have done that in the past. I believe we'd need a motion to change the order of business.
I'd like to move to change the order of business to take up the annual election of officers at the conclusion of our cases, hearing our cases this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Is there a second to that motion? I'll second that. Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Ron.
My only comment is that all conditionally approved so long as no board members sneak out early before we get to that part of our meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. Is there any objection to changing the order of business? Seeing none, that item will be moved to the end of our agenda. Moving on to our consent agenda. Ms. Dole.
I'm sorry. I realize, looking at the consent agenda, that I have a disclosure with regard to the 2013-012, the zoning variance to allow a non-conforming tower to increase in height in the R10 district. I was recused and will not be participating in voting on that resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Dole. We are on our Item D consent agenda. We have the four resolutions for approval. Recognizing the disclosures we've had before us, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please? Thank you, Ms. McKay. That motion and Mr. Hart, second? Is there any comments? Anything like to be polled? If not, could we move to approve the consent agenda? Is there any opposition to approval of the consent? Seeing no opposition, the consent agenda is approved. Moving down the agenda, we have no appearance requests, unfinished business, regular agenda items. That brings us to H, public hearings. Before we hear our first case this evening, I would like to read the order of business for our variance hearings. The chair shall introduce the variance and explain the procedure to be followed. The variance case, number, and the name of the applicant shall be read into the record. The board shall hear and rule on any objections to the sufficiency of notice. The board shall hear a brief staff presentation outlining the variance, not to exceed 10 minutes. On conclusion of the staff presentation, the board members and this applicant may then direct questions to the staff through the chair. The applicant shall give his or her presentation, not to exceed 10 minutes. Throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests upon the applicant, who must convince the board by a preponderance of the evidence that the variance should be granted. On the conclusion of the applicant's presentation, the board members and the staff may then direct questions to the applicant through the chair. The hearing shall then be open for public testimony. Each person has three minutes. Representatives of groups have five minutes. All persons who testify may be questioned by the board, staff, or the applicant. On the conclusion of the public testimony, the staff, followed by the applicant, shall have the right of rebuttal. The board shall proceed to develop oral findings and conclusions with regard to the variance and disposition of the variance. The staff shall reduce the oral findings and conclusions to writing for subsequent adoption by the board at a later meeting. The matter then rests with the board, and the chair asks for a positive motion from the board. Our first evening tonight is Case 2014-006. The applicant, the estate of David Warner, is the applicant here this evening? They've indicated they are present. Could we have staff provide us with the sufficiency of notice, please?
There were 53 public hearing notices mailed on January 23rd, 2014. We did not receive any back.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Could you proceed with the staff presentation?
Thank you. This is a request for a variance from AMC 2140-115F2B to allow a garage to encroach approximately 16 feet into the side yard setback. The site is developed with a single-family residence that was constructed in 2000 according to property appraisal records. The permit for the residence was not completed prior to construction. Access to the lot is via Denina Drive. The owner constructed a 28-foot by 32-foot garage in 2006, approximately half of which is located in the side yard setback. The side yard setback in the R10 district is 25 feet for lots with slopes under 30%. The submittal states the average slope is 17.1%. The garage is set back approximately 10 feet from the lot line. The garage encroaches approximately 16 feet into the setback. An application for a land use permit for the garage was not submitted, and no permit was obtained. The garage is shown on the plot plan submitted for a land use permit in 2000. The house was initially shown located in a non-conforming location, meaning it was shown 16.3 feet back from the side yard setback. But it was changed by the petitioner at the counter with a handwritten note indicating that it would be built at 26 feet from the property line. The handwritten note is on Page 10 of the packet. This indicates that the owner was aware of the side yard setback requirement. The permit was not closed out, meaning that the petitioner did not return to submit an as-built of the property. You can refer to the letter issued by the Building Safety Division on January 12th, 2004. That letter is on Page 12, sorry, Page 11 of your packet. The petitioner's submittal states that placing the structure in its current location was the only feasible location on the property, given the steep topography. The narrative also states that there is a level area north of the house, but the well is located in this area. As for the findings, standard number one, this standard is not met. While much of the site is sloping, there are level areas where the garage could have been constructed. The garage could have been located on the east side of the house and the general area of where it was shown in the plot plan submitted in 2000. As for standard number two, this standard is not met. The garage could have been constructed in a conforming and viable location on the east side of the house, access from the current driveway or from the road. Standard number three, this standard is not met. The hardship is self-imposed, as the owner was aware of the need to locate the garage outside the yard setback, as this was made clear when the petitioner applied for the land use permit in the year 2000. In addition, a permit for the garage was never obtained. Had the petitioner applied for a permit, staff could have suggested a conforming solution. The land use permit applied for by Mr. Warner, he indicated that he planned to place the garage, as shown in his permit application, but subsequently did not follow that. Standard number four, this standard is substantially met. If approved, granting the variance will not affect the use of adjacent property. The narrative indicates that mature vegetation separates the garage from the neighboring property. A letter has been received from the neighboring property owner stating that the location of the garage has not impacted the use and enjoyment of their property. Standard five, this standard is substantially met. A garage is a permitted use in the zoning district. Allowing the garage to remain in its current location will not change the character of the neighborhood. Standard six, this standard is substantially met. The variance would not affect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of surrounding area. Standard seven, this standard is partially met. The structure could be relocated to a conforming location, as described above. However, it is located on a large lot, in a neighborhood of homes on large lots. The petitioner states that existing trees are located between the garage and the adjoining property. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Are there any questions of staff by the board? Ms. Ferguson, I do have a question. We have some additional information that's been provided to us in addition to the staff packet. Is that from staff or is that from the applicant?
That information is from the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions of staff? Seeing none, could the applicant come forward, please? And if, before you begin your presentation, you could state and spell your name for the record, please?
Sure thing. Just make sure, okay. Mr. Chair, members of the board, thank you for your time this evening. My name is Rebecca Wint, spelled W-I-N-D-T, appearing on behalf of the estate of David Warner. And if possible, I'd like to reserve one minute of my time for rebuttal.
You will then have nine minutes.
Okay, thank you. And with me tonight is Mark Seward, who's the current surveyor for the property, who will have some comments regarding the application, who's also available to answer your questions. As noted by staff, this is an application for a variance from the 25-foot side yard setback applicable to properties in the R10 residential Alpine slope district. This case arose after the passing of David Warner and the realization by his brothers, who represent his estate, that the garage presently located on the property encroaches approximately 16 feet into the 25-foot required side yard setback for the site. You can see it there. There's the garage. There's the setback. As our application sets forth, the physical circumstances of the lot are such that the garage is constructed in the only feasible location on the property, and the estate thus seeks the variance to permit the garage to remain in place. Staff and the petitioner agree here that several elements of the variance standard are met. The variance will have no negative impact on the use of adjacent property. Construction on the adjacent property here is located at least 55 feet from the closest corner of the garage, and the immediately adjoining neighbor, Jason Wetzel, has submitted a letter into the record actively supporting the variance application. Moreover, the current location is entirely in keeping with the neighborhood character and is screened by substantial old growth vegetation. As I'll explain in greater depth in a few minutes, the variance is in keeping with the intent of Title 21 as applied to the property. This is the R10 district, which is a zone dedicated to development, which preserves the natural topography and vegetation of a property. Regarding grant of the variance and the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the municipality of Anchorage, put simply, there's just no adverse impact. Staff agrees with this conclusion, and none of the departments submitting comments on the application have presented any objection or any concern about a grant of the variance. The primary issue here really is whether this variance is necessitated by the physical circumstances of the property, and that is where I'm going to spend most of my time tonight. I've provided you with a few additional photographs of the property tonight, and this here is a large version of the most recent as-built survey of the property, which is on Page 35 of your packets as well. So this property is a .92 acre parcel in the R10 district, and you see construction is set back from the street, which is required by the topography and also in keeping with neighborhood standards. And it's located behind significant old growth trees. And those are, you can see those in the first photo that I've handed out. That's a view from Denina Drive, so you can barely see the home, actually. It's behind quite a substantial forest. And the northern, northeastern portion of the property is the flat area of the property, and that's where all of the construction is located. The southwestern portion of the property, this pink portion here, is separated from the northeastern portion by this steep slope. This is a 38% slope here running down the middle of the property. And you can see that slope in the second and third pictures that I've handed out. Those are taken from immediately behind the house and show that slope dropping down right behind the house. The eastern portion of the lot, facing Denina Drive, is bisected by a gully. You can see that on here, which leads into this deep slope down toward Eagle River. Eagle River is back here. Sorry, right here. And the water source for the property is a well, which is located right here in front of the house. And the septic for the property is located down here in the pink area. You can see the well and the beginning of the gully in the fourth photo I've handed out, and you can see the septic field and that slope dropping down from behind the garage in the final photo. So I hope those are helpful. And as you can see from the survey of these photos, the physical circumstances of the property are such that the location of the garage really is the only feasible place for a garage on the property. The flat building area in which the garage and the home are located is effectively hemmed in by a steep slope, a gully, a well, and the property line. In the report, staff calls your attention to the site plan submitted for the property in 2000, prior to construction of the existing house on the property. As noted, that's on Page 10 of your packet. And this site plan actually further illustrates the problems with construction in the property. As noted, the plan was drafted to show potential construction beginning at 16 feet from the property line, so it effectively shows the house here encroaching into the setback and the garage here, which is now the corner of the house. And it was changed by hand at the counter, as noted, but the buildings were not actually moved over on the plan, so while it may have been conceivable to build a garage basically here, if the house were here encroaching into the setback, with the house in a conforming location, you would end up putting that garage here in the gully. So moving the garage to the other side of the gully, which is another idea, basically puts it in the middle of the setback required on the other side of the property and also quite a distance from the house. While it may be theoretically possible to fill the gully to permit construction to take place on top of it, and Mark can speak to this in greater depth if you have questions, you'd have to remember that the gully slopes continuously downward toward this steep slope, so any kind of fill here would require actually a comprehensive cut-and-fill operation that would go back and address this steep slope here as well and potentially impede the septic field down below. And so I'd like to conclude by bringing it back to the full intent of the R10 zoning district, which is set forth in 2140-115 of the municipal code, which includes a commitment to development, which will enhance and provide stability to natural features such as forested areas, and will incorporate such features into the development of the site design. Take into consideration the topography and the location of all physical improvements on the land, and minimize the grading operations, including cut-and-fill, consistent with the retention of the natural character of the site, while also guaranteeing an adequate supply of potable water for each site, paying special attention to site drainage and the natural flow of all water courses. I think it's crucial to keep this language in mind regarding this application, because while it may be possible, it would definitely be a substantial hardship for the property owner, but potentially feasible to basically cut-and-fill the entire property, backfill all of this, move the garage over here. Doing that would not only lead to exceptional undue hardship for the property owner, but I think also would run contrary to the purposes of this zoning district. And now I'll defer to Mark if he has additional comments to make.
You state and spell your name for the record, please.
My name is Dwayne Mark Seward, S-E-W-A-R-D. I'm the licensed surveyor that did the as-built this early this winter and that discovered this whole problem. I just wanted to, I've been on the lot quite a bit. I've done a lot of surveys in that area. My business is in Eagle River, so I'm real familiar with that subdivision. This lot is one of the worst two lots in the subdivision. The next lot to the south is kind of comparable to that, but it's probably the worst lot for, excuse me, for building on. There's a lot of emphasis on that old plot plan, where it was 16 feet, and they show like 11 feet between the house and the garage. When that house is now moved over to where it is, and we have to have a 10-foot minimum separation between buildings, that separation is from the deck, because it's an elevated deck. It's not a ground floor deck, so it's above 36 inches, so the 10 feet is then from the deck. I've been out there, looked at that to see if that garage could be built there today, and it's, it'd be ridiculous. I don't know if a builder that would do it. You could cut that knob down 15 feet, which would make the garage pretty much useless. It'd be a steep driveway coming in. And the toe of the slope, as Rebecca noted, you'd have to have a flap pad, gravel pad to level that off, then you'd be filling in that gully in the back of that slope. At one and a half to one slope or two to one slope, that gravel's going to be down in that septic area. It would be a substantial amount of fill to be brought in to make that usable. And then it's going to block off that natural drainage. That's all I have to say, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Seward. You have a minute, 10-minute of rebuttal, Ms. Wint. And I should ask the question. I see that there's a power of attorney, I believe. Ms. Wint, we're looking for authorization for you to represent the...
Mr. Chair, I have a copy of it, if you wish to see it.
Okay, I don't wish to see it, but just so long as you've got one, I believe that's sufficient. Thank you. Is there... Sorry about that. That concluded your presentation?
That did conclude your presentation, yeah. We have a lot of questions.
Okay, well, with that, let's see if there are any questions by the board members. Mr. Ron.
Thank you, through the chair. Mr. Seward or Ms. Wint, can you confirm the dimensions of the garage? I see it narrated in the staff packet, but not corroborated on the survey map.
The garage dimension, it's the face of the garage, face of the street is 32.3, and the width is, the depth of it is 28.4.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Ron.
Thank you, through the chair. Another question. Ms. Wint, you described the well as hemming in, the buildable area. Can you speak to that a little bit more in relation to the lack of a front yard setback for this property in the R10 zoning district?
Well, I think it's, I mean, my comment is just fairly rudimentary. It's just that the well in being located right here prohibits there from being, that this buildable area is unlimited. If you wanted to sort of, if you wanted to attempt to put a building here, it may end up on top of the well, which you wouldn't want to do. And sort of likewise, if you were aiming to put all of the construction, the lot up here, you end up backing up against the well. So it's just, that's where the water source is.
Thank you.
Ms. Iker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you speak a little bit more to the size of the garage? Is that a two-car garage? Is that a single-car garage? Does it have shop room on the side? I'm getting to, I guess I'm getting to the point that approximately half of this structure is located on the setback.
I believe it's a two-car garage. Mark can confirm that. And as a note, if it's helpful in terms of neighborhood character, all the homes in this area have at least a two-car garage. There are some that have three and larger garages, so it's in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, the two-car garage.
Are there any other questions of the applicant? I do have a question. Ms. Wint, you indicated that we have, there's a letter in the packet from the adjacent property owner in support of the variance. Could you direct me to that in the packet?
Sure. Let me double-check the page number.
I've been told it's Page 13. How's that sound?
That is accurate.
Thank you. Mr. Vig.
Thank you, and I know you focused your presentation on the physical characteristics of the lot with regard to standards one and two. And can you rationalize standard number three about the hardship being self-imposed? How that, how you see that?
Well, I think here the important framework is acknowledging that this is the estate looking for the variance. These are the brothers of David Warner. David Warner admittedly did construct a garage without a permit to proceed in this area. Now his brothers are looking at the property, so I think what they're basically asking is that they be permitted to have a garage in this location. I would request that the board review this as a request, basically the request that should have been submitted before this garage was constructed. It's a new party. They didn't build the garage. They're just looking to hopefully have a garage on this property so that either they decide to live in or they decide to sell it to a local party, which is really the more likely option, that it's a property that can be sold, because the expectation in this area of Eagle River and this, you know, part of Alaska is that you can have a garage on your property, a single-family home.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions of the applicant? Yes, Mr. Ron.
Thank you, through the chair, Ms. Wint. The application indicates pending sale or property transfers that... The application indicates pending sale or property transfers, that purchase and sale, potential property transfer still in play?
It is potentially still in play.
Are there any other questions? The staff have any questions of the applicant?
No, Mr. Chair.
Very well. That concludes the presentation. Could we, we will open it up for public testimony? Is there anyone for the public wishing to testify? Anyone at all? Seeing and hearing no one, the public hearing is closed? The staff have any rebuttal?
I don't.
Thank you. Ms. Went, you have a minute and 10 seconds.
I have no further comment.
Thank you. With that, the matter rests with the board. Mr. Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and case number 2014-006, I move that the board grant a variance from AMC 2140.115-F.2. B, minimum yard requirements in the R-10 district to allow a garage to encroach into the required 25-foot side yard setback in accordance with staff recommendations, or rather, department recommendation number one on page five of the staff packet.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. Could I have a second to that motion, please? Mr. Vig?
Second to motion.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Mr. Ron, could you speak to your motion, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and get things started. With regards to finding number one, I appreciate the petitioner's description and walking us through the site-specific characteristics and ties back to intent in other sections of the code. However, I'm struggling with standards one and two regarding the direct correlation between those physical circumstances and placement of the garage. I am at the point where I can find that standards one and two are at least partially met. However, in moving to standard three, and this is where I struggle the greatest with right now, as questioned by board member Vig, the action associated with self-imposment. Given the history of this case, knowledge, apparent knowledge, based on actions by the owner who constructed the garage, I cannot find that standard three is met. I agree with the department findings in recommendations four through six and standard seven, concur that that standard is at least partially met, finding that a garage in this neighborhood is a reasonable expectation. The size of the garage is not egregious. However, I do struggle with the existence of such a large variance that needs to be requested in order to make the garage conform. That's all I have for now, and look forward to board member comments.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. Mr. Vig.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, excuse me, I appreciate the applicant's presentation and walking us through, as Mr. Ron stated, the physical characteristics of the lot, and it's helpful to me to visualize the topography on the lot. While the standard speaks to physical circumstances that are not applicable to other land in the same district, I look at that slope, which is quite steep, and I, and I believe that it extends throughout that part of the subdivision there. But to me, the thing that makes this a bit unusual and perhaps is the extraordinary part of the physical circumstances is that gully that bisects the lot, which really limits the available area in which to build a structure outside of a setback. And so I view that as a physical circumstance that while the other part of the sloping lot is common to other properties, I think that that gully, the presence of the gully is a physical circumstance that is extraordinary in this case. And so I would, in my mind, believe that standards one and two would be substantially met due to that, the presence of that gully. I also am struggling a bit with standard number three on the hardship being self-imposed. It's a difficult one for me, and I'll probably come back to it at some point before we vote, but I will go on the record and say that I agree with staff's findings with regard to standards four, five, and six. And I believe that standard seven, being a minimum variance, making possible a reasonable use of the land. Again, as Mr. Ron stated, the size of the garage is not excessive. A garage is a reasonable use of the land, and at this point, it appears that that's the most likely, most likely the only place for the garage on the property. So I believe that standard seven is substantially met. And I'm interested in board's, other board members' comments with regard to standard number three.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm in agreement with board member Vig with regards to standards one and two. I'm in agreement with staff with regards to standards four through seven, and as it relates to standard three, with it being self-imposed, although I understand the individual that passed may have made a decision that would have been self-imposed had he been here today. I guess the way I see it, it's the brothers that are really applying and they had no, I guess, they weren't involved in the decision in my eyes, and I guess I don't really see that as being self-imposed as it relates to them and the applicant at this point in time. So I intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Are there other comments by board members? Ms. McKay?
Through the chair. I agree with Mr. Ron and Mr. Vig and Mr. Hart on standards one and two. I agree with staff on standards four through six. I do not agree on standard seven. But the big issue for me is standard three. I empathize with the inheritors, but I think that this is entirely self-imposed. When you inherit a piece of property, you get warts and all, and unfortunate for the inheritors, there was a decision by the original builder, Mr. Warner, to build in a non-conforming location. It appears that he understood that it would be a non-conforming location, and I am not going to vote for the motion.
Thank you, Ms. McKay. Ms. Dole.
Thank you. I agree with Ms. McKay and staff as to standards four through six, and I agree with Mr. Vig and Ron and Hart with regards to standards one and two. With regard to standard three, I don't believe it's been met, and I believe that there was opportunity to engage with the municipality. I noticed in on page three, it said the garage was not constructed until 2006, and believe that they don't, there should have been, there was opportunity to engage with the municipality when the garage was being built, and they'd even received a letter on page 11 in 2004, indicated that an ASBIL survey had not been provided. With regard to standard seven, I am, I am not, I guess I look at the photo on page nine, and I think there, it, I know there's a well there, but it would seem to me that a garage could be built in that flat area in front of the well, although it would, I acknowledge it would be very far from the house. But I'm not inclined to find that standard seven is met by the preponderance of the evidence. However, I'm open to hearing the thoughts of my fellow board members.
Thank you, Ms. Dole. Are there further comments from any board members? Ms. Iker.
I am appreciative of the discussion that we've had. I am in agreement with Mr. Vig's comments with regards to standards one and two, and staff's recommendations with regards to standards four, five, and six. I myself am troubled by seven and three. While I do believe that a two-car garage is typical and pretty desirable where we live, I'm having trouble with seeing that the garage built on page nine is the minimum that would require to make reasonable use of the land. There are other parcels within the area that we know, or I'm sorry, within the Anchorage and perhaps Eagle River with single-car garages. My problem with all of this is really standard number three, that it's not self-imposed. It seems like the owner had made a deliberate decision to not seek comments from the municipality, and that is a troubling precedent to set, to go ahead and approve variances after the fact. And so for that reason, I will not be supporting this motion.
Thank you, Ms. Iker. Are there other comments or additional comments from board members? I believe I'm the last one that needs to weigh in, and I, well, I guess, Mr. Ron, I don't want to...
I'll give you another minute, Mr. Chair. Touching back upon standard number three, I as well appreciate the discussion that we've had on both sides of that finding, and in listening to that discussion, I've tried to disassociate the garage and its current location from the hardship, and therein try and tie the hardship back to the physical circumstances of the land. And that's only taken me further down a rabbit hole and realized that the property owner in building the house on the property knew that there were physical circumstances that would drive and limit the ability to construct on that property. So therein, as I take it that far, can only find self-imposed hardship. And again, still can't find that standard number three is met.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. Other additional comments from board members? I would just like to weigh in, I'd like to commend the applicant for a very well-represented presentation and walking through the standards. I think you can understand where wrestle, where we wrestle with the standards the most, and that's with one, two, and three, and typically it's standard number three. And I do appreciate the comment that whether this is a before or after-the-fact request for the garage encroaching, I do also agree with staff and the findings of Ms. McKay and Ms. Dole, and I believe now Mr. Ron, that standard three is not met, that it was self-imposed, and the hardship is self-imposed. So I do not intend to support the motion as well. I agree that standards with Mr. Vig, that one and two are met, and with staff, that four, five, and six are met, and that with staff, that seven's only partially met. So I don't intend to support the motion. Are there other comments? In order to pass, a motion must carry a vote of the majority of the fully constituted board, which would be five members. That motion fails, that was too quick, by a vote of seven to one, I believe. Every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face, it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to the Superior Court. And again, I apologize, that went rather quickly, I believe the vote was seven to one, seven...
Six.
I'm sorry? Six to one? Okay, six to one. That brings us to our next case this evening, which is case 2014-039. Is the applicant here? He's moving forward, indicating he is. Could staff provide us with the sufficiency of notice, please?
There were 47 public hearing notices mailed out on February 20th, 2004, and we did not receive any, any back.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson, could you provide us with your presentation?
Thank you. This request for a variance from AMC 2140-080-G1 to allow construction of a new house to encroach 13.6 feet into a required 50-foot front yard setback. Mr. Gallo purchased the property in 2001. He obtained fill and grade permits in 2009 to construct a driveway and pad. A stop-work order was issued in 9/9/09 due to the presence of organic material, concrete in excess of 12-inch diameter, and steel in violation of non-conforming fill per the city code and ground preparation, also per city code. Another stop-work order was issued on February 20th, 2014. It shows that fill did not comply with the requirements of grading permit nor the grading code. A geotechnical report was submitted with the variance request, and it states the fill was improperly placed and contained some organics. The fill slope is already experiencing failure at the top and mid-slope. If the fill slope is not rebuilt properly, it will eventually fail completely. In terms of community comments, we did get two comments in. One was from a neighbor who opposes the proposed variance encroachment into the setback, as the property owner knew of the steep slope conditions, and a smaller house can be built without needing a variance. The other neighbor comments on the dangerous fill slope that has been created by the owner. And then earlier today, we received another comment from a neighbor that says that, who is in opposition to the variance request? The Rabbit Creek Community Council submitted the attached letter dated February 25th of 2014. The letter states their unanimous opposition to the variance request as it does not meet the seven conditions under Title 21 and fails to meet the policies of the Hillside District Plan. We also received two comments from agencies that are outlined in staff's report. As to the findings, standard one, the standard is not substantially met. The site is steeply sloped. However, this was apparent when the owner purchased the property, the yard setback requirements were... The yard setback requirements were in place at the time of purchase. The proposed house would encroach thirteen point six into the front yard setback. The proposed house is six thousand square feet on two levels. A smaller house would be conforming, not encroaching to the setback, and not require a variance. There are properties in the area that have been constructed without a setback variance with similar lot configurations and constraints. Standard two, the standard is not substantially met. Special or extraordinary circumstances arise from the physical characteristics of the property that result in a hardship or limitation on the development of a property. There are topographic constraints on the lot, but the applicant is not deprived of rights commonly enjoyed by other property in the R-six zoning district. The lot can accommodate a home site without encroaching into the setback, but it would be a smaller home than desired by the property owner. Standard three, the standard is not substantially met. The constraints of the lot are self-imposed and result from the actions of the applicant. Yard setbacks for properties in the R-six district were codified prior to the lot purchased by Mr. Gallo in two thousand and one. Therefore, he had knowledge of the code requirements, and he also was aware of the slope constraints of the lot. By not adjusting the dimensions of the proposed house, the situation appears to be a matter of inconvenience. Standard four, the standard is partially met. If approved, granting the variance will to some degree affect the use of the adjacent property. The geotechnical report states in regards to this variance standard, requiring the applicant to meet the fifty-foot R-six setback would produce a visually prominent fill and adversely impact the stream. The fill slope as proposed by the applicant will be no less visually prominent as viewed by adjacent property owners. Standard five, the standard is partially met. Reducing the front yard setback would place the house closer to the road and negatively affect the neighborhood, as the reduced setback would be out of character with the neighborhood. For this reason, it would not enhance the physical and environmental features which add to the desirability of living in that neighborhood. Standard six, the standard is partially met. If approved, the variances would not affect the health and safety of the people in the area. However, siting the house closer to the road would affect the welfare of the neighbors. Standard seven, the standard is not substantially met. The applicant has a conforming alternative, which is to reduce the size of the house so that a variance is not needed while still making reasonable use of the land. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Are there any questions of staff by the board? Seeing none, could the applicant come forward, please?
Yes, my name's Dan Bowles, B-O-L-L-E-S.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles, and so that I make sure that it's not all for naught. We have a, I'm looking for a letter in the file, I believe on twenty-eight, there's a...
Yes, page twenty-eight.
I'm sorry?
Page twenty-eight.
Page twenty-eight. Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Would you proceed with your presentation?
Okay. Well, this has been a long road for Mr. Gallo and Mr. Bullock, the general contractor, is here also to answer questions on the fill project. What we have is a situation in which, once in two thousand and nine, once the permit was taken out, subcontractor did bring in unauthorized fill onto the site that resulted in a stop-work order. And you have the series of inspection reports by Building Safety there, I believe. We had those there for you. The last inspection there on July five, two thousand and eleven notes that pieces of concrete on site were broken up and do not exceed twelve inches in diameter. Miscellaneous word debris has been removed. Survey was provided. The amount does not exceed the permit, and approximately eleven hundred yards are yet to be placed. No nonconformance observed. So hopefully, we can put that to bed. The concrete was broken up to acceptable size, and the wood debris was removed from around the fill area. However, there was some material brought in by another party who broke down the fence or the gate and did deposit unauthorized fill in there. So that has brought us back to the point of obtaining the engineer's report, the soils' engineer's report. And we did that in December. If you take a look at the as-built survey that's provided in the plat package, you'll notice that there is a revision date there of January twenty-seven. That is because we had to go back and readjust the setbacks on the house. So in my response on question number three, you'll note that we have said we will abide by the geotech report. That material will be removed, it will be brought in with good material, and the house will be set at a good place. So when we take a look at the report there, and you try to get a comprehensive idea of what we're dealing with, back here in the back end on page sixty-one, we see the cross-section there. But you'll notice it's an approximate slope cross-section. The bottom at the extreme says we've got a hundred foot of nice, flat, level land either side of the stream. There is not a third of a football field width down there that's flat. It's about a three to one to a four to one slope down there. So the lot is definitely slope-affected. In fact, on the south property line, when I went out there, I found both property corners, north, or the southeast and the northeast property corners, we strung a line between them, we pulled off our distances so that we could measure the crest of the fill there, see how far, what our setbacks actually are. That southeast property corner sits seven foot below the shoulder of the road. So when you look at the as-built survey on the plot plan or the plat, you'll notice that there is an easement on there, and that they maintained a fifty-foot road right-of-way through there. Why the fifty-foot road right-of-way? That is because of the excessive slopes in the area. And so from the road to the property, there's a fifty-eight percent slope. Beyond that, it exceeds twenty-six percent, natural terrain. And so I mentioned that we pulled the distances, found the property corners, they're both one-inch pipes driven in at the corners, and the one, the northeast, that's forty-seven feet off the center line of Rabbit Creek, old Rabbit Creek Road, and the southeast corner is fifty-one feet off. And so we're able to ascertain then exactly how far to the edge of that slope that we actually have. Also, the fill area is thirty-five foot south of the northeast corner, and thirty to thirty-three feet north of the southeast corner. At sixty-five foot south of the northeast corner, from the property line to the edge of the fill, it's fifty-one feet. At a hundred and twenty feet south of the northeast corner, the property, from the property line to the edge of the fill, is seventy-three feet. At a hundred and seventy feet, which is the other end, the southerly end of the proposed structure, from the property line to the edge of the fill is eighty-four feet. If we take a look at our cross-section there on page sixty-one, if you take a look at the distance on the bottom, you come up with about ninety-four feet. But once again, this is approximate slope cross-section configuration. The lot exceeds five hundred feet in length. They only show four hundred and forty feet here. So that's why we had to go out and find out where that property line was and what the distance was. So given those distances, at eighty-four feet, per the IBC and the recommendation of the soil engineer in the municipality of Anchorage, you have to come back twenty feet on that sixty-foot slope. So now you're down to sixty-four feet. You take fifty foot back from your front yard setback, you have fourteen foot left. At one hundred and twenty feet, seventy-three foot minus your twenty foot setback to the edge of the slope, leaves you fifty-three feet. That leaves you three foot to build a house in. This lot cannot be built on right now without a variance. If you take a look on page nine, aerial photo there of the petition site, you notice due north of this lot, the subject site, you'll see a little house in there. That house is built one hundred percent within the front yard setback, and it's built on fill. If you go down Old Hillside Way, I included a copy of an old variance in nineteen seventy-six. You drive down Old Hillside Way, most, a good number of the houses on the downslope side encroach into the front yard setback, whether old or new construction. Just looking at the photos here, we can see that there are a number of houses in the vicinity which either the twenty-five-foot side yard or the fifty-foot front or rear yard setback will need variances at some time, point or another. It is not uncommon in this area for houses to require a variance because of the steepness of the terrain. Also, we noted that at nineteen eighty-four, municipality did come in here and rezone some of the areas on the other side of Rabbit Creek to R-ten S-L. But they did not even consider these slope, highly slope-affected lots adjacent to Rabbit Creek. Why? Because they were trying to make their property, the municipal property on the other side, I know, because at the time, I was working for the Health Department, we wrote a bad report back to the Heritage Land Bank, and the project got scotched. So we, we see that the municipality here moved for their own interests, but failed to move for the interest of the individuals in the area. We feel that these are met, and that we have reason here to do this, to go and continue on and bring more fill in there will create a very prominent fill. And a house of the size proposed by Mr. Gallo is not unreasonable. There are a number of houses in this area which are of similar or larger size. I'll take any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Are there any questions of the applicant by the board? Ms. Dole?
Yes, I am looking at the variance request, and it's a variance request to encroach into the required fifty-foot front yard setback.
Yes.
And I'm trying to understand if you have a particular amount, I mean, is it going to be encroaching five feet into it, ten feet into it, fifteen feet into it?
Thirteen point six feet into that fifty yard. In other words, you'll have the, let's see, on page thirty-seven, let's see, no. Yeah, page thirty-seven, the as-proposed, this application is requested for a thirteen point six foot or twenty-seven point two percent encroachment into the required fifty-foot front yard setback.
Okay, and earlier you were talking about side yard setbacks, and I just wanted to confirm that you're not requesting a variance to encroach into any of the other setbacks beyond the front yard setback.
No. Ms. Iker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was wondering if you yourself or perhaps the owner had attended the Rabbit Creek Community Council February meeting and spoke during their discussion of this?
No, I was unavailable for that meeting.
Mr. Ron?
Thank you, through the chair, Mr. Bowles. Page ninety-eight of Staff Pack, the subdivision plat shows a twenty-five-foot drainage easement bisecting the property. Comments from the Rabbit Creek Community Council, page three, item B, first bullet, speak to that drainage easement, and call out that it is incorrectly labeled as twenty-five feet and that it should be fifty feet per the Hillside District Plan. Can you tell us a little bit about that creek and where the new toe of slope is in relation to that drainage easement? Does that easement still exist, or has it been filled?
Yes. That drainage easement is per the plat. And we showed the plat there, seventy-two dash twenty-two by Dickinson and Oswald, and it says on there, there is a twenty-five-foot drainage easement centered on the creek. And yes, the new hillside plan does say that. This predates that. We are under the, we applied under the old code, and the old code is twenty-five feet either side. I understand the new hillside plan does require fifty feet, and we, the toe of the fill is eighty-five feet from the center of the stream. I went out and I measured it myself.
Did that answer your question, Mr. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes. Are there other questions of the applicant by the board? Other questions? If not, thank you, Mr. Bowles. The, we will open the hearing up for public testimony. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify? If you will, I think if you'll state and spell your name for the record, please?
I'm Diane Holmes, speaking for the Rabbit Creek Council. This is spring break, and our chair is away.
Ms. Holmes?
You, as you can see from our letter that we did unanimously oppose this variance for all the reasons given in our letter. And does your letter contain colored pictures? Thank you. Knowing the property as we do, having lived there and having seen the illegal fill placed over the years, we were concerned about the beginning, from the beginning, about the structure and what could safely be built there. Our letter tries to answer the seven conditions as for the variance from our viewpoint. The huge house planned for the site is totally inappropriate. I noted that it plus its nine-hundred-foot garage would hold three of my houses. However, we note that the geotech report suggests a different foundation on page forty-nine of your packet. And of course, reducing the size of the building and with a different foundation, this variance could be reduced or avoided. Apparently, the owner is unwilling to do either. In short, this variance can't possibly meet all of the required seven conditions, and we hope those pictures will show you exactly what you're looking at. If it's unclear, I've got a picture here, I would be, I would love to show you of what it looks like. Do you want me to pass it around at the end? You let me know. While this case is about a variance, and we know that the fill is being taken care of through other means and other requirements, there's another issue I'd like to bring to your attention. Because we don't often get to justify before you, and because there's a lot... Because we don't often get to justify before you and because there's a lot of confusion sometimes by staff and the public, we'd like to alert you to the significance and legality of the comprehensive plan and its subcomponents, which includes neighborhood and district plans, and about a specific detail that may come before you in future cases. And I believe you just mentioned it about the stream setbacks. If you read the 2020 comp plan, you noted that in the top of every page of the last chapter, there was a sentence about how the plan was to be used by decision-making bodies until the subplans were developed. And most people think of that as Title Twenty-One. But there is, that's only one of many subplans. When these subplans are adopted as part of the overall comp plan, they are legal. Now, some may question legality, including one Assembly candidate, I note, of these plans, and you're encouraged to read the legal opinion by Bill Green in two thousand during the Wirth administration. But there's neighborhood plans like West Anchorage, Government Hill, and the Hillside District Plan, and they're all specific to these neighborhoods, and they are not to be trumped by Title Twenty-One. This is confusing to some, but if you reflect for a moment, there would be no need for detailed neighborhood plans if they would simply be overridden by Title Twenty-One. While the Hillside District Plan has many general policies that have to be fleshed out, it clearly states there shall be stream setbacks of fifty feet per side. Even Title Twenty-One notes that there are different setbacks for the Hillside District Plan area from the rest of Anchorage. So the detail is clearly spelled out and is to be followed. And by the way, the Hillside District Plan was adopted in two thousand and ten, so I, and while the fill permit in question here was gotten in two thousand and nine, I believe there may be other issues that were permitted after two thousand and ten, and so this would fall under that. Anyway, the case before you in some instances does show twenty-five feet setbacks from a very earlier plat. I'm not disputing that because right now the slope has not failed enough to go into that fifty-foot setback. And I know from the area that there are not six thousand square foot houses in, on such steep slopes. I've been there thirty-five years and I have not ever seen one this, this steep. Thank you. Do you want my picture?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Holmes. If you hand that, you're going to have to let us keep your phone for thirty days, so it's part of the record, so I don't know if you're comfortable. Don't let it go.
Yeah.
Are there any questions by the board, Ms. Holmes? The staff or the applicant have any questions? Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to testify? Anyone at all? Seeing and hearing no one, the public hearing is closed. Does staff have any rebuttal?
Mr. Chair, don't.
Uh, does the applicant have any rebuttal? Yeah, oh.
No, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bowles. With that, the matter rests with the board. Could I have a positive motion from a board member, please? Yes, Mr. Vig?
Mr. Chairman, in case twenty-fourteen zero-three-nine, I move that we grant a variance in the R-six district to allow a house to encroach into the required fifty-foot front yard setback in accordance with AMC twenty-one forty-zero eight-zero G-one and that, um, subject to, uh... Condition number one in the Staff Packet on page seven.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Could I have a second to that motion, please? Mr. Ron, you've indicated you would second that?
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. Mr. Vig, would you speak to your motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There certainly are steep slopes on this property and I believe that they're not unique to this particular property in the same district. I don't find anything particularly unique about this particular lot. So I, at least from my understanding of the situation now and what I've heard, I don't believe that standard one is met. And, uh... Given that fact, standard number two, in my mind, is not substantially met either or not met. Standard number three, I think the hardship is self-imposed. The conditions are essentially the same as when the owner bought the property and should have understood what the restrictions were at the time. And so I agree with staff that standard is not substantially met. Standard number four, the variance, excuse me, the variance, if granted, would not adversely affect the use of the adjacent property. I believe staff is accurate in that it is probably partially met. And standard number five, the variance, if granted, would not change the character of the zoning district. Presence of the house, you know, thirteen-point-six feet into the setback in the front, I think, is somewhat of a change in character. So I don't believe that that is substantially met, nor do I believe standard six or seven are substantially met, in particular with standard number seven. It's a very large dwelling that is proposed. We heard from representative of the community council who pointed out the fact that the Geotech report identifies a solution to the twenty-foot setback from the crest of the slope. If the pile, if a pile foundation was used, that could be reduced. And so I believe that there are other solutions that could reduce the size of this variance request that would still make possible a reasonable use of the land, and so I do not intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Mr. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I concur with staff and Board Member Vig's findings in standards one through three. Regarding standard number four, I find that this standard is not met. I have concern over the potential negative impact to drainage and watershed health associated with the fill necessary to make this a buildable lot as is currently being proposed and therein find potential for adverse effect to the use of adjacent property. I agree with Board Member Vig and staff regarding standard number five as being partially met. And standard number six, in keeping with my argument from standard number four, I find that standard number six is not met. Additionally, concerns voiced through the geotechnical report and heard in public testimony regarding stability of the fill and placement of such a large house on that fill are of concern to, um... health, safety, and welfare of the people. I agree with Mr. Vig and staff regarding standard number seven. I do not intend to support the motion. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. Are there other comments from board, any board members? Any other comments? I would, Ms. Dole?
I do not intend to support the motion. I agree with the comments of staff and Mr. Vig and Mr. Ron as to certain standards not being met and in particular...
Would you speak more, a little bit more into the microphone, please?
Sorry.
That's okay, thanks.
With regard to standard one, I... There are physical circumstances but that make the property, that affect the property, but I believe they're applicable to other land in the same district from the testimony that's been provided and the staff. I believe that the applicant has not carried his burden to show that a smaller, that it would be reasonable and feasible to build a smaller house on the, or that a, as to a smaller house. Standard seven, it talks about the variance granted being the minimum variance that will make possible a reasonable use of the land, and I believe that the applicant needed to show that it was, that a smaller footprint could not be built or was not reasonable. And I also note with regard to the, um... That there were comments from the Rabbit Creek Board and also from, I handed out today from the owner of the home directly across Old Rabbit Creek Road from the subject property, who found that it would likely diminish the enjoyability and value of the property, which I believe the testimony from the Rabbit Creek Community Council and their letter was saying the same thing, and for that reason, I believe that factor four is not met.
Thank you, Ms. Dole. Are there any further comments by any board members? That motion fails by a vote of seven-two-zero. I must read for the record. Every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face, it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and that the parties have thirty days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to the Superior That concludes our public hearings this evening. No further, I don't believe there's any reports. Ms. Ferguson, any idea what our caseload is for next month?
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I didn't check. I don't know.
Okay. And any board members know that they will be absent next month? Mr. Vig?
There's a fairly good chance I will not be able to attend next month.
Anyone else besides Mr. Vig? Okay, thank you. If not, uh... Any other board member comments? Is that part of our election process? Well, I guess that brings us up to elections. As I mentioned, we need to elect a chair, vice chair, and parliamentarian. Are there any nominations? Anyone willing to, um... They're either naming the hat or interested in any of those positions? Mr. Ron?
Uh, Mr. Chair, are we nominating all for one and one for all at the same time, or should we start with parliamentarian work up or chair and work down?
I'm open to any, any and all ideas.
Well, I don't intend to weed the best of us out early, but I heard somebody interested in the parliamentarian role, so I'd be happy to nominate Board Member Iker as parliamentarian.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. Mr. Vig, was that a second? I'm sorry, there's been a motion. Was there a second?
So moved.
And Mr. Vig, second?
I do.
Um... I do this infrequently enough, I don't recall what the procedure do. We need to ask the victim if she wants to, if she's willing to accept or, is there, Ms. Iker, are you willing to accept the position of parliamentarian?
I am.
Is there any, anyone else, any other nominations for parliamentarian?
I thought that motion was for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Sounds good. Is there any, what's that? Oh. If there's no one else, I would move that nominations are closed and shall we vote to show it being unanimous? Thank you, Ms. Iker. Vice Chair? Mr. Vig?
I don't intend to put anybody on the spot, but I will. And, uh, Mr. Hart, I've been impressed with your logic and your analysis of the cases and your thinking, thinking cool under the, under pressure, and I think I would support you if you were interested.
For vice chair, that is.
For vice chair, yeah.
Uh, I'd be willing to accept the nomination for that. I actually serve as vice chair for my, my, my regional corporation, so.
Oh, man. Could I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Dole. And I'd follow up, I think, well, I guess that's not my place. Is there, um... Any other nominations? I guess under comments, I go back to, I believe it was Chair Gujao, who's, I think it's good to have different people filling different roles. I think, Mr. Ron, you've served as chair and vice chair, and Mr. Vig is parliamentarian. Ms. McKay, it sounds like you've held, you've been on different boards and I can't speak to what you've held, but I think it is good and healthy to have things move around as well. So, I'd vote for Mr. Hart as vice chair. And chair. Mr. Vig?
That's a prior request to speak.
Oh.
I'm sorry, I don't know why it didn't get cleared.
Okay. Could we have a nomination for chair? Mr. Ron, I believe, oh, go ahead, Mr. Ron.
Uh, well, Mr. Chair, you just came to me, watching you swivel in your seat, how difficult that is for you to do, and, you know, on the left and the right side, we have to sit facing one direction or the other and move our head, so. And knowing that the chair needs to do that less than the rest of the board members, think that that, if not for any other reason, would be a good one to nominate you as chair.
Um, thank you, Mr. Ron. I, uh... I think I've tried to step down twice and the, it's been the kiss of death for the acting chair that we're, we're gonna be finding a new one. I think, as I said the last time, I'm not opposed, but I don't see this as a stepping stone for me for any other greater office, so if there's anyone that's really dying to be chair, I would really have no, no opposition to their nomination, but I'd be willing to serve as chair as well.
Oh, Mr. Chair, in all seriousness, I really appreciate the work that you do for the board and think that you are well-suited for the job, so. All joking aside, I would appreciate you taking on the responsibility again.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Hart. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, nominations are closed. Vote, please vote. So then, for the record, Mr. Ms. Iker will serve as parliamentarian, Mr. Hart will serve as vice chair, and I will serve as chair for, for the next year. Are there any other board comments? Not, we're adjourned? Oh, Mr. Vig, sorry?
I was only gonna ask if Ms. Blaker, Ms. Ferguson knew of any possible additions to the board, I know we're down two right now.
Excuse me, Ms. Iker, was, we were discussing that earlier, what kind of a, someone you would suggest, would you want more attorneys on the board or engineers, or, we have no one in mind, but would fulfill the board and kinda open it out?
Further, further to that, if there are types of individuals, as Lori was suggesting, lawyers, engineers, or any other professions that you feel would be of benefit to the board, we can, you know, go out and beat the bushes, or if you had recommendations of people who would be good to fill the, the remaining chairs, yes, please let us know.
Mr. Hart?
I guess, speaking from a personal standpoint, not, not being a lawyer or an engineer, it, it's actually, it's very difficult at times for me to quite comprehend these cases in the same fashion that other people on the board do. So I, I personally think it would be prudent to recommend either a lawyer or, or an engineer.
Or perhaps even a surveyor.
That would work, too.
Now, if you all know of anyone.
I actually worked for, for a company that has an entire engineering firm, so I, I can talk to a few people and hopefully make recommendations.
Well, how about if any board members think of, of anyone, perhaps they could relay that name to, to Ms. Ferguson? Mr. Vig?
I, I think Ms. Ferguson is onto something there, and I, I think we've had surveyors on the, on this board in the past, as I recall, is that right?
Yes.
And perhaps we're missing a little bit of that perspective, so I would, I would be in favor of that.
I'd agree.
And maybe another member, you know, at larger, general, general business background, commercial developments or something.
Well, I believe with Ms. Wad's departure, we've lost an architect.
That's true.
Surveyor, so I think those are a couple, a couple of good places. But again, if anyone can think of, of a name to pass on to staff, please do so. Any other comments? Not, we're adjourned? No. Ms. Dole, motion to adjourn, second, Mr. Hart? Any objection?